Good evening and welcome to the Twinsburg Board of Education regular meeting Wednesday, May 16th, 2018. We call the meeting to order at 7:02. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Solora?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
If you could stand with me for the Pledge of Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No changes to the agenda. Move on to the Board President's Report. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. I would like to start tonight by saying thank you. Thank you to the residents of our district who came out and supported our renewal levy last Tuesday. Thank you to the countless volunteers who worked with the Blue Ribbon Committee for months garnering support and spreading the word about our district and the importance of this renewal. Thank you to Mr. Walt Hoffman, Mr. Jamie DeFabio, and Mr. Seth Roden for chairing the Blue Ribbon Committee and leading another successful campaign. Thank you to my colleagues for your unification and public support of this levy and what we do, as well as the countless hours spent behind the scenes in discussions with residents and voters to properly inform them of our finances and operations. Thank you to Superintendent Powers for your tireless efforts again. Your dedication to this district and its success is unmatched and does not go unrecognized. Fourteen days ago, my colleagues and I voted on a resolution to bypass our normal board policy and authorize a superintendent, the treasurer, and the business manager to expend up to $125,000 to ensure that our eighth grade students' Washington DC field trip would still continue as planned and as they were expecting. When Superintendent Powers contacted me a few hours prior to our meeting that evening to inform me of the news that she found out regarding non-payment of monies to various vendors involved with this trip by Discovery Tours, my answer to her was simply, "We need to send the kits." It was a sentiment that I am glad to say, and not surprisingly, was shared by all of my colleagues as well. While this board can take credit for realizing the importance of this unique situation and making the authorization, our decision was the easy part. Without the work of Superintendent Powers, business manager Chad Welker, HR director Belinda McKinney, RBC principal Jim Reese, Mrs. Debbie DiAgostino, Mrs. Minion Willis, Mr. Ed Lipnos, and our many teacher chaperones who served as tour guides, our authorization would have done nothing. These folks worked tirelessly from Thursday morning until the buses left Tuesday to ensure that our rooms were reserved and paid for, the buses were scheduled, our itinerary was revised and set, that food vouchers were secured for those on the trip. Phone call after phone call, one issue led to another. And there are enough stories to fill a book one day. But these individuals and our staff worked through it all, even to the point of being minutes away from driving down to DC to hand-deliver a check for their hotel rooms after a post office mix-up. They could have given up at any minute, they could have told us it was too much to do and too little of time, but they didn't. They did what they do every single day. They put the students of this district first, and they do what is right and best for these students. While this situation was unique, the effort was not. This trip showed a behind-the-curtain view of what goes on every day in our district and highlighted the amazing dedication and work ethic of our administrators, our teachers, and our staff. And if I can find a positive out of the mishandling of this trip by Discovery Tours, it is that our entire community got to see behind the curtain and got to witness firsthand the behind-the-scenes things that go often unnoticed and unrecognized. I truly believe we have the finest and most dedicated people working here in this district. And as we recognize those who are retiring tonight, I want to thank you for your many years of service to this district and more importantly, its students. For those who will be receiving newer continuing contracts this evening, I thank you for your past service, and I look forward to seeing the great things you will continue to bring and do for our students. That concludes my report. Superintendent Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Solora. And Board of Education, again on behalf of nearly 300 kids that are now back from DC, thank you very much for your commitment to them. I know Mr. Reese had quite a week there, or two weeks, and throughout the trip, even the weather cooperated, so I have to say it was a fantastic opportunity. Thanks for letting our RBC eighth graders make some memories in DC. It was because of your leadership and your commitments to making it happen that it did happen, and we appreciate all that you do on behalf of our kids. Board of Education, this evening is a celebration. We have so much to celebrate, and we're going to get to the celebrations, but I want to just extend the word of thanks that Mr. Solora just gave to our residents for the passage of Issue Three, the District 6.9 Mill Renewal Levy. The revenue generated from the passage of this renewal levy will allow the district to continue to provide excellent services and programs to our Tigers. I sincerely appreciate the support our parents and residents provided in the successful passage of Issue Three. The approval of this levy will allow the Twinsburg City School District to maintain both a solid financial future and academic excellence that our families and residents have come to appreciate and to value. Please know that we will continue to be good stewards of your tax dollars as we work to help every child in the Twinsburg City School District reach their greatest potential. I'm greatly indebted to our co-chairs, and as Mr. Solora just mentioned the names, I'm going to do it again, of Mr. Walt Hoffman from the Village of Reminderville, from the city of Twinsburg, Mr. Seth Roden, and again from the township, Mr. Jamie DeFabio, along with the committee's treasurer, Mr. Brian Cook, and also Patty Coslow, who served as our PR consultant. Those individuals gave countless hours behind the scenes, just making sure every I was dotted and a T was crossed, and provided leadership to our Blue Ribbon Schools Committee, so I am very appreciative of them. Additionally, we want to thank Mayor Sam Alonso and the Village of Reminderville, and Mayor Ted Yates and the Twinsburg City Council for their formal endorsement of the levy campaign. We sincerely appreciate your vote of confidence in our school district, and we thank you and everyone else once again for the passage of Issue Three. Board of Education, the class of 2018 enjoyed a wonderful prom just about a week ago, and we want to thank our senior class advisor, Brittany Hardery, who has done just a fabulous job the last several years with our seniors. The prom was fantastic. We had a number of staff members come out and serve as chaperones, so they were all hands on deck. Our kids looked great, and then after prom, they went to the after-prom, and that was put on by our parents, who just did a great job of hosting an evening that I'm still hearing about, which was just such a wonderful event. Lots of raffles, great food, and just good times with each other, so we appreciate our parents for stepping up to the plate and helping host the after-prom. Board of Education, on Monday, May 21st, which is next Monday, the Twinsburg Ministerial Association will host our Baccalaureate at St. Cosmas and Damian Church. The service will begin at 7:00 PM. We thank the members of the Twinsburg Ministerial Association for once again planning a very special evening for our families, especially for our graduates, since they are going to be on the eve of their commencement. The class of 2018 will graduate on Tuesday, May 22nd, at 7 o'clock PM. Commencement will take place again at E.J. Thomas Hall on the campus of the University of Akron, and pretty soon they'll be off to careers or another campus or life in the military. We have so many outstanding graduates, I'm very, very proud of each and every one of them. Once again, we want to thank graduation advisor Donna Houston, who has just done a great job behind the scenes tying up all the loose ends. Last night, she hosted the Senior Experience Symposium, at which 115 of our seniors had a chance to participate in internships here the last week or so of the school year. So, we thank Mrs. Houston for all that she does to make sure that graduation goes off without a hitch, and of course, we thank Mr. Alex Popovich, who is the Senior Assistant Principal, along with Mr. Matt Rakowski, who is the Senior Guidance Counselor. And I have to tell you, the Guidance Counselor works the magic behind the scenes, making sure all the paperwork is in for those universities and colleges, and we thank Mr. Rakowski for all of his efforts, along with all the counselors over at the high school who just do a great job with our kids. Good luck to all of our student athletes who are still in play. We had such a rainy beginning of the spring season, we still have lots of sports happening, and so if you have a chance, please check the district website and come on out and support our kids in the last few weeks of the season. Monday, May 28th, is Memorial Day, and we'll pause from school for that day to remember those who have served and those who are serving our great country. And Board of Education, you know, today, I sent you some exciting news. Prior to today, we knew that we had four Purple Star Schools. We had Wilcox Primary School, we had Samuel Bisso Elementary School, we had RB Chamberlain Middle School, and we had Twinsburg High School. Today, we learned that George G. Dodge Intermediate School was named a Purple Star School. That means that they are a military family-friendly school, and I believe, I think, we're the only school district in Ohio where all of our schools are Purple Star Schools. That says a lot about our commitment to our military here in our city, and I thank George G. Dodge Intermediate School. I know Mrs. Huggins had the leadership on that task, and I appreciate you taking it to the end goal. So, congratulations to you tonight. So, and the last thing, I guess, is just to remind everybody that the last day of school, not like I have to remind everybody, right? It's Thursday, May 24th, and our students' first day of school for the 2018-19 school year will be Wednesday, August 22nd. It will be here before you know it, so enjoy the summer and just have a safe and happy time with your family and friends, making great memories. So, now it's time to celebrate and talk about making some great memories. I'm going to ask Mrs. Belinda McKinney to come forward. This evening, we have the fine occasion to recognize a number of staff members, a number of teachers, who have gained the status of being recommended for a continuing contract. And Board of Education, you know, teaching is a very complex job, and it demands a broad knowledge of subject matter, curriculum, and standards, and our teachers have to be enthusiastic getting up in front of their students every single day and have a caring and loving attitude and a love of learning themselves. And teachers must have the knowledge of the discipline, and they have to understand all about classroom management and classroom management techniques. They need quite a toolbox, because we try to address every child's needs in their classroom. And finally, teachers must have a desire to make a difference in the lives of our students. And I want to say, Board of Education, that the teachers that we're recommending this evening for a continuing contract meet that definition of an outstanding teacher. I'm very proud this evening to recommend teachers who have met the requirements for a continuing contract, as noted in Ohio Revised Code 3319.08D and 3319.11B. And so this evening, Mrs. McKinney and I will have the great pleasure of introducing these outstanding educators, and I would like to ask the Board of Education if you could please come forward to give these outstanding teachers a handshake and congratulations. At the same time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Kim Fink, who is the president of the Twinsburg Education Association, TEA, to please come forward to represent the rest of our teachers So, to begin, we would like to ask Mrs. Gillian Carter to please come forward. Mrs. Carter is an intervention specialist at RB Chamberlain Middle School, and she has worked in our district for five years. Mrs. Carter said that she became a teacher because in high school she worked with peers that learned differently. This created a desire for her to support others in the classroom that had disabilities or who needed support within her school. One of Mrs. Carter's favorite classroom memories was witnessing a student overcome a huge hurdle and end up successful within the general education classroom. Mrs. Carter also thoroughly enjoys taking her students to the Special Olympics at Nordenia. She did that last year, and just yesterday, we were able to travel to Nordenia High School and watch our special needs kiddos participate in the Special Olympics. What a great day that was, regardless of the rain, it was a great day. And Mrs. Carter says it gives her population of students the opportunity to be a part of something bigger than they are, and they feel successful in the process of participating in the Special Olympics. And she believes Special Olympics is such a fun and positive event for everyone who participates in that event. Mrs. Carter considers the most important qualities of being a successful teacher is to have passion for helping others, to have a lot of patience, and to be engaged. And Mrs. Carter's students knows that she loves to teach, because she engages them and cares for them in such a way that they are always wanting to be in her classroom. They know they are supported and cared for, and they feel safe. And in her spare time, if she has very much of that, Mrs. Carter enjoys spending time with her family, especially at cookouts and family game night, and she also likes to run with her dog Junior. Please join me congratulating Mrs. Gillian Carter.
The next candidate for a continuing contract, Bryn Green, was unable to be here tonight. I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Bryn Green. She's an intervention specialist at RB Chamberlain Middle School. Bryn has worked in the Twinsburg City School District for two years. When asked why she became a teacher, she says, "I became a teacher because my family is made of teachers and nurses and doctors. I once visited my aunt's intervention class and fell in love with special education." A favorite classroom memory for Bryn Green is when a student had a concept click, and it was like a light bulb went on, and the students, as well as she, got super excited that they understood what she had been teaching them. When asked what she considers to be three most important qualities of a successful teacher, she said, "A teacher is kind, caring, and lends a listening ear to both students, parents, and colleagues." When asked how our students know that she loves to teach, she said, "They know by the positive attitude I bring to the classroom every day and showing that I believe in them. I look past their disability and at their ability to succeed." In her spare time, she enjoys spending time with her husband, three kids, Kinsley, Brayden, and Ryland, and our two dogs, Morgan and Addison. She loves nature, running, working out, and reading when she has the time. Congratulations, Bryn Green, and sorry about that.
Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Marie Hannah. Ms. Hannah is one of our world languages teachers at the high school. She teaches French, and she's been in our district for five years. When asked why she became a teacher, Mrs. Hannah said that she loves the French language and culture, and mostly she enjoys working with young people. One of Ms. Hannah's favorite classroom memories happened when she had a student who did not care about learning a language, but then she turned around and loved French. The student's motivation level was very high, she had fun, and she learned a lot. Ms. Hannah considers the three most important qualities of a successful classroom teacher to be great classroom management, a knowledge of the subject, and able to start over many, many times. No kidding. Ms. Hannah's students know she loves to teach, because she is always happy, always smiling, and always telling them that she loves teaching them, and they make her day every single day. In her spare time, Ms. Hannah enjoys reading and cooking, especially trying new recipes, which she says don't always come out very good, but she still likes to try new things. Sounds like me, Ms. Hannah. And in her, she said, there's one other thing she wanted to add about herself in her introduction. She noted that she is very, very happy to be a part of the Twinsburg City School District, and she loves all of her students as if they were her own. She always remembers their innocent faces and their great smiles. Congratulations to Ms. Hannah.
Sandy Coxis. Sandy Coxis is a reading intervention teacher at Samuel Bisso Elementary School. Sandy has taught in Twinsburg City School District for four and a half years. When asked why she became a teacher, she stated, "I became a teacher because I always wanted to help others, but didn't have the stomach to become a doctor. I've always liked kids, so I decided teaching would be perfect for me. I've never regretted that decision." A favorite classroom memory, she had a student at the beginning of the year tell her that they didn't need to, she didn't need to test him how many words per minute she read, because she couldn't read, and she didn't like to read. Now, at the end of the year, this same student asked if she could take home some of Mrs. Coxis's books, because she is now a better reader, and a good reader, I said, and she likes books and likes reading. So, that's why she, that's her favorite classroom memory. When asked what she considers to be the three most important qualities of a successful teacher, she stated, "Successful teachers need to truly care for their students and their education. They need to be flexible, because every child learns differently, and lastly, teachers need a sense of humor. It relieves stress and increases student engagement." Her students know that she loves to teach, because she tells her students that she loves to teach. "I'd tell them if I didn't love teaching and didn't care about their education, I would stay home every day, watch TV in my PJs, and eat ice cream." They usually laugh at that visual. What she enjoys doing in her spare time, besides watching TV in her PJs and eating ice cream, she enjoys traveling to various states to watch her daughter play volleyball, and she enjoys watching her son run track and play baseball, and of course, she loves to read. When asked if there's anything else she'd like to include in her introduction, she said, "After teaching in various school settings over the years, I can truly say that I enjoy working at Samuel Bisso Elementary School the most. I love being part of the Twinsburg family, and I'm proud to be a Tiger."
Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Felicia Loretz. Mrs. Loretz is an intervention specialist at Twinsburg High School, and she has been with our school district for five years. Mrs. Loretz became a teacher because she believes that every child, regardless of his or her shortcomings, should have and deserves the opportunity to shine and be proud of small successes so that they can look forward to the greater ones. One of Mrs. Loretz's favorite classroom memories is from one of her, when one of her students wrote a letter, and it read, "Despite of what some students think about your classroom rules, you are a great teacher and you care about us." Mrs. Loretz believes that there are three most important qualities to be a teacher, and those are that the teacher has to have a love and be compassionate, faith in her students' ability to succeed, and trust and honesty. Mrs. Loretz's students know that she loves to teach, because she often tells her students this phrase. She says, "If I believe in you, and I'm not giving up on you, then you cannot give up on yourself." In her spare time, Mrs. Loretz truly enjoys being with her family, as family is the most important thing to her and the valuable relationships one can have. Additionally, in her spare time, she strives to increase her spiritual beliefs. Mrs. Loretz stated that she is very grateful that she has an opportunity to help impact young students' minds with a positive, caring, kind-hearted attitude. She's thankful that the Twinsburg City School District believed in her ability to exhibit these characteristics through her daily teaching and touching the lives of others. Congratulations to Mrs. Loretz.
Jocelyn Rowetter, third grade teacher at Samuel Bisso Elementary School. Jocelyn Rowetter has been a teacher for the Twinsburg City School District for four years. When asked why she became a teacher, she said, "She became a teacher to make a difference in the lives of as many students as she could." She has many classroom stories and memories, but one of her favorite happened recently. The class, on Earth Day, created wall-e robots out of recycled materials. The students planned, created, and designed magnificent robots and presented to the class. The three most important qualities of a successful teacher, according to Mrs. Rowetter, are love of kids, passion for teaching, a work ethic that doesn't quit, and grit. Her students know that she loves to teach because of the following. One of her students wrote, "Mrs. Rowetter shows that she loves to teach by making sure that all of her students understand the concept in a really fun and enthusiastic way." In her spare time, she enjoys being with her family and being active outside, skiing, hiking, and visiting new places. For her additional comments for her introduction, she wrote, "I am thrilled to teach in Twinsburg and enjoy my students and their families, along with the staff at Bisso Elementary School."
Next, we'd like to introduce Mrs. Lynn Springer. Mrs. Springer is a second grade teacher at Samuel Bisso Elementary School, and she's worked in our district for 18 years. Mrs. Springer says she became a teacher because she just loves working with children, and Mrs. Springer started teaching Safety Town when she was just in sixth grade, and she never looked back. Mrs. Springer's favorite classroom memory was when a student in her class won for the first time in a weekly spelling game that they play in her classroom. It was toward the end of the year, and he won, and her whole class went wild with support and congratulations for him. It was so awesome to see the kids rally around a classmate. That's what it's all about. Mrs. Springer believes that the three most important qualities of being a successful teacher include patience, a sense of humor, and a caring personality. Mrs. Springer's students know that she loves to teach, because they have fun together every day while learning and growing. In her spare time, Mrs. Springer enjoys being with her family and just about doing anything at all, hanging out with her family. And I understand that they're getting a new puppy very soon, and I can hardly wait to see Mr. Springer holding their puppy, and we're looking for a picture. Right, Mrs. Springer? Okay. Finally, Mrs. Springer noted that she has been very blessed to work with such great people here in the Twinsburg City School District, especially her colleagues, her students, and our parents. Congratulations to Mrs. Springer.
Brandy Thomas. Before I say she's not here, I want to walk, look around and make sure. All right, she's not here. Brandy Thomas is a math teacher at Twinsburg High School. She has taught math at Twinsburg High School for three years. She became a teacher because she loves helping others, and she loves seeing the students have what she calls the lightbulb moments. A favorite classroom memory for her is when a student took an extra interest in math because of the creative assignment she had them do, writing a rap slash poem about what was covered that year. The three most important qualities of a successful teacher are dedication to your students, content at school, loyalty and respect to students, district, and community, and good communication skills to students, parents, colleagues, and community. Her students know that she loves to teach by her energy that she teaches with every day, as well as her dedication. Her additional comments, excuse me, in her spare time, she likes spending time with her family, her husband, Brian, kids Holden, Bryson, and her new little one, Tatum. Congratulations, Brandy Thomas.
And now I'd like to introduce Ms. Rebecca Williams, an intervention specialist at RB Chamberlain Middle School. Mrs. Williams became a teacher because, while working as a music therapist and working with adolescents in the mental health field, one day she was helping one of the students work on learning how to do long division. And as they practiced, the student got more and more excited and confident in her skills. After their session, this particular student went skipping down the hallway back to class saying, "I did it." And Ms. Williams said that moment really drove home with her, and it was so impactful that she decided that she was going to go back to school and obtain her teaching degree, and she has never regretted that decision, and neither do we. So, that's a great story. Mrs. Williams has many favorite classroom memories, but the one that sticks out from this year is a student who struggled with using descriptive words in their writing. And so, as they practiced every day, she said that they needed to use more descriptive words in their writing, so she suggested that they would have a writing word wall, and students decided that they needed to spice up their writing with spicy words selected from the writing wall. And then one particular, there was a student in the middle of writing who stopped and said to Ms. Williams, "I need to use a spicy word right here." And he walked over to the wall and found an appropriate word that he was able to incorporate into his response, and he was so excited to see that this word worked, and the rest of the class was equally as enthusiastic. And Mrs. Williams said, "That's what teaching is all about, seeing that enthusiasm in kids and letting kids find those spicy words that spice up what they do and feel good about their work." So, congratulations to Ms. Williams. Also, Ms. Williams believes that a teacher must above all have passion for teaching and love what she does every day. Another important quality is being flexible to meet the needs of all of her students, and a third quality is being creative. Learning needs to be fun and memorable for our students. Ms. Williams, students know that she loves to teach, because she has developed relationships with her students and enjoys learning about them as they enjoy learning about her. She had a student tell her once that she knew that Ms. Williams cared about her students, because during morning hall duty, Ms. Williams said good morning to them and chatted with them as they came upstairs and into her classroom. Students see the little things that show that teachers care, such as conversations, jokes, extra time spent helping students, having lunch with them, taking an extra interest in things that they are interested in doing. And finally, in Mrs. Williams' spare time, she enjoys taking walks and hikes with her husband and her dog, spending time with family and friends, participating and being involved at her church, especially singing in the choir and playing flute and the handbells, reading, cooking, and gardening. Sounds like you're very busy, Ms. Williams. Board of Education, it is my pleasure to recommend to you this evening these outstanding educators who put their students first in all that they do. They are dedicated, they are innovative, they are enthusiastic, and I'm proud to be their colleague. So, on behalf of the Twinsburg City School District, thank you for your commitment to these fine educators. these fine educators and I appreciate your consideration of my recommendation this evening.
At this time, we would like to acknowledge our retirees. Most of these individuals have spent countless years in the field of education, some here, some other places, but they are choosing to end their careers here with the Twinsburg City School District.
And Mrs. McKinney, before you proceed, I would like to ask Mr. Chuck Nash, who is Vice President of the Twinsburg Support Staff Association, to please come forward as he's representing President Whitman Hager this evening. And we'd like to also congratulate the retirees as they're introduced this evening. Thank you for being here, Chuck.
All right, we will start with Eric Brunton, Transportation Supervisor. Eric has been with the Twinsburg City School District for three and a half years and has over 38 years in the field of education. He's spent 12 years at East Cleveland, 21 years at Shaker, and two years with Wiltless. Eric's favorite memory of the Twinsburg City School District is seeing where transportation is now compared to where it was when he started. Eric will miss working with the staff of the Twinsburg City School District. He plans to travel, spend time with his grandchildren, as well as continue to work part-time. Congratulations and good luck, Eric.
Next, we'd like to congratulate retiree Joe Floyd, who was a bus driver for us. Unfortunately, Mr. Floyd is not with us this evening because he has since moved to Florida and is enjoying some warmth and sun somewhere south of us. But regardless, Joe was with the Twinsburg City School District for eight years and previously had 35 years at the Cleveland Metropolitan City School District as a custodian. His favorite memory from his days here in Twinsburg is undoubtedly all of the children whose lives he crossed. He still remembers many of them. Joe said that he misses the routine of going to work and he hopes to stay healthy and to stay vertical. So congratulations to Joe and we wish him many years of being vertical.
Louise Turango, Principal, Twinsburg High School. Louise has been with the Twinsburg City School District for 12 years, three years as an Assistant Principal at Twinsburg High School and nine years as Principal of Twinsburg High School. Prior to Twinsburg, Louise was an Assistant Principal at Bedford and Brush High Schools for eight years. She was a Spanish teacher for South Yucatlan High Schools for 12 years, which brings the total to 32 years of service. Louise's favorite memory from the Twinsburg City School District is when a young lady stopped her at a Twinsburg football game and asked, "Were you the Assistant Principal Bedford was?" Louise said, "Yes." The young lady then said, "If it weren't for you, I would have never made it through high school. I would have quit school. Now you have my daughter and I am a nurse because of you." Louise will miss the laughs with colleagues and the comments that the kids make on a daily basis. Sometimes even their zany behavior makes her laugh because it makes the day fly by. Louise does not want to hear an alarm clock for a while. She wants to spend more time with her two wonderful daughters and her family that she has in town. She especially wishes to have more date nights with her husband. There's a qualifier, though. At restaurants that do not have 50 large screen televisions with sports on them while she tries to talk with him about her day. She knows that this may come as a surprise to him, but she wanted to make sure he heard it tonight. Congratulations, Louise Turango.
All right. Next, we would like to ask to come forward Ms. Sheila Bambic, but in her absence, Mr. Mark Bendis is going to accept her retirement gift from the school district. Mrs. Bambic has worked for our schools most of her adult life and she dedicated 23 years to the Twinsburg City School District, plus subbing and volunteering prior to that. Ms. Bambic does not have a favorite memory of the school district as there are too many to choose from, but she says she really misses working with the kids and all the friendships she's made with her coworkers over the years. Mrs. Bambic plans on taking one day at a time and enjoying every moment. Congratulations to Ms. Sheila Bambic.
Darlene Leroy, Bus Driver for the Twinsburg City School District. Darlene has dedicated 26 and a half years to the Twinsburg City School District. She was a stay-at-home mom and took care of her three children before starting in the district. Her favorite memory from the Twinsburg City School District is driving her special needs students. Darlene misses her kids, coworkers, and bosses. However, Darlene is enjoying spending time with her grandchildren. Congratulations, Darlene Leroy.
Next, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Bob Pacey, who was not able to be here with us this evening. Mr. Pacey has been with the Twinsburg City School District for the past 29 years. He's been part of the high school education both as a teacher and counselor since 1970. In all, he has worked at four high schools. When asked what his favorite memory is from his time in Twinsburg, Mr. Pacey says, "There have been many moments in the time that I've had here at Twinsburg High School. Honestly, there are too many to single out just one. I was very proud to see my daughter walk across the stage and graduate from Chamberlain High School. The only other moment in time that I will remember is the outpouring of support from Twinsburg High School staff and Principal Mrs. Turango during one of the most difficult times in my life when I lost my wife. I couldn't have come to this point without that support." Mr. Pacey said he's actually not going to retire, but he's rather moving to another place and time. He's going on to be the head basketball coach at Mayfield High School and he is also going to be and continues to be the number-one fan of his four grandchildren as they play basketball, soccer, swim, and run. And Bob ended his comments to me by saying that he will miss the many close friendships formed over his years in the Twinsburg City School District. Congratulations to Bob Pacey.
Don Jones was a teacher at Twinsburg High School as well as varsity baseball coach. Don Jones dedicated 32 years to the Twinsburg City School District. His favorite memory is the dedicated staff and their commitment to not just academics but to the development of young people. Through all these years, the dedication and commitment has always been there from the Twinsburg School District. Don will miss the day-to-day interaction with the young people of Twinsburg. Their energy, enthusiasm, and belief in their future will always be with him. He says he has been blessed to spend his entire career in the Twinsburg City School District. He plans to spend time with his wife, children, and grandchildren. Congratulations, Don Jones.
That concludes our presentation.
On behalf of the board, I want to thank everybody for all your dedication. You guys have served the district for, you know, the years counted off was amazing. So I appreciate it, you know. We've said it multiple times, you know, we are a team. It's every single person, every single employee of this district contributes every single day to what we do for the children here. So thank you all for your dedication. For those who are retiring, enjoy it, enjoy, you know, some time off and relax. You guys have earned it. And for, you know, all the continuing contract teachers and everybody else receiving contracts tonight, you know, thanks for staying here and thanks for what you've done.
Board of Education, I would like to ask a favor. If we could just take two photos. The first would be of our continuing contract teachers with the Board of Education and then the second photo would be all of our retirees that are here this evening. So if you are a continuing contract teacher, would you please come forward and get set and Mr. Sullen, who is my sidekick photographer, will take the photo for us. Mr. Soler, that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Powers and again, thank you for everyone honored this evening. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to recess at 7:44. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Second.
Or do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, seconds. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
All right, we are in recess. All right, so everybody? All right, we'll reconvene at 7:56 and move on to Communications and Committee Reports. Any Committees, anything to report?
Finance Committee met on May 5th. Many of the topics you'll hear about tonight, five-year forecast, some other annual fees that come up for review every year, so I'm not going to steal the thunder of some of the administrative reports, but you'll hear about that tonight and talked a little bit about facility use and a variety of other types of fees, so we'll hear momentarily.
Nothing on Committees, however. I typically would save this information for miscellaneous, however, I think it's a little bit important, so I'm hoping that my colleagues will indulge me in kind of reporting out on something that's a little different and want to make sure that I'm able to report out. Today, I drove down to Columbus this afternoon to provide proponent testimony in the Senate for House Bill 87. And so I drove down this afternoon, the hearing, which was scheduled at 3:15, did not, got delayed until quarter to 4:00. So, but I was able to provide proponent testimony on behalf of that bill. And just as a reminder, we've been working on this a long time, probably almost a year right now, but this particular piece of legislation, I've been coordinating with Representative Christina Rogner whereby monies that are sent to charter schools, if charter schools are, you know, end up having a finding by either the auditor of state or the Ohio Department of Education, if they have a finding for recovery, rather than those dollars being returned to the general fund, which is the current practice right now, this legislation would actually ensure that those dollars go back to the districts from whence it was taken. So again, I was able to provide proponent testimony in the Senate. The bill started on the House side, which I also provided, excuse me, proponent testimony at that time and it has since been voted out of the House and in the Senate Education Committee. So I was able to do that, get back on the road, drive another two hours to be here with two minutes to spare. So four hours on the road, 15 minutes of testimony, and here I am. So we're hopeful that this is the end of the road and hopefully it gets voted out of committee. Prior to when the legislature adjourned for summer recess, we're hopeful that it gets voted out of committee and is able to hit the floor and then the General Assembly and hopefully make it to the governor's desk. So more work behind the scenes, but I wanted to make sure I was able to report out on that earlier than later. So I appreciate you allowing me to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Thank you for your support of this district and, you know, your working down in Columbus to, you know, help us, help us out up here. So we appreciate that definitely. Any other committee reports? Moving on, Superintendent Powers, some administrative reports this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Soler. This evening, we have two administrative reports for you and our community. The first administrative report is going to be presented by our Food Service Supervisor and District Dietitian, Mark Bendis, along with one of our fantastic PE educators from Twinsburg High School. And the reason why they're presenting this evening, Board of Education, in your policy 8510, there's a statement that says, "The district shall assess the wellness policy at least once every three years on the extent to which schools in the district are in compliance with the district policy, the extent to which the district policy compares to model wellness policies, and the progress made in attaining the goals of the district wellness policy. The assessment shall be made available to the public on the district's website." So this is somewhat new for our school district in the review of the wellness policy. Not that we don't review policy, but in the convening of a committee made up of staff members, administrators, parents, students, and going line by line and making sure that we're doing exactly what we need to, to institute a policy here regarding wellness in our school district. So I appreciate Mr. Bendis and his leadership on the committee work and Ms. Richardson is going to be representing the teachers on the committee. I think you'll find their presentation this evening very compelling. We are doing a lot of things really well and we're doing some things pretty well and there are some things that we need to improve on. So good evening, Mr. Bendis and Ms. Richardson. Glad that you're here and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Thank you, Board. It's a pleasure to be here as always. So the wellness policy, this is actually the first time since, I'll start on the first slide here if it works. Hang on, hang on. My light here? Ah, yes. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview. A local wellness policy is a written document of official policies that guide a local education agency, an LEA, or the school district's efforts to establish a school environment that promotes students' health, well-being, and the ability to learn by supporting healthy eating and physical activity. The local school wellness policy requirement was established by the Child Nutrition and WIC Reauthorization Act of 2004. So we've had a wellness policy pretty quickly right after there. I think 2006 was the first time that we had Niola work with us with a wellness policy. And I honestly tell you, it was pretty general at that time. Since that time, the requirements have changed. So anyway, it requires each local LEA participating in the National School Lunch Program and/or School Breakfast Program to develop a local wellness policy that promotes the health of students and addresses the growing problem of obesity. The responsibility for developing a local wellness policy is placed at the local level so that the unique needs of each school under the jurisdiction of the LEA can be addressed. So, you know, for us that are in wellness and nutrition, we take all this to heart. So, you know, this is the first time that we had to go through this full evaluation. So at minimum, this is what a policy must contain as required by the legislative. Should we just?
Let me just control for a minute.
Okay, thanks.
That's where you want me.
Next. As you know, I come to present every year. It's part of my responsibility as a registered dietitian in the district to go through and review everything that we sell. And of course, every year, new items come up, so we have to evaluate those too and make sure that they comply with the guidelines. This year, we just had an administrative review by the Law and Amendment of Education, and we passed with one of the colors. But they also want to look, we actually have to show proof that all the items that we sell meet those standards, the smart snack standards, and are in compliance. So that's part of that. The other part that has to be included in the wellness policy is standards for all foods and beverages provided, but not sold to students during the school day. Example would be in-classroom parties, classroom snacks bought by parents, and/or other food given as incentives. So I'm happy to say that the majority of the schools, when they do purchase food for parties, it comes through us. So one thing that does is, one, I can ensure that it does meet the guidelines. Two, I can get the allergen information for it and be able to provide it to the parents. So we're able to provide it on two fronts, make sure that it's healthier and also make sure that it's safe. And we'll see if we can get there. Okay, so, I'll skip one. Anyway, I have, I skipped the page. I'm sorry. I'll go back to that one in a second. The policy is for food and beverage marketing that allows marketing and advertising only for those foods and beverages that meet smart snacks in schools' standards. And also, it must include the description of public involvement, public updates, policy leadership, and evaluation plan. We'll go back if we can. So the Wellness Committee, what is required, at minimum, the LEA must establish wellness policy leadership of one or more LEAs and/or school officials who have the authority and responsibility to ensure each school complies with the policy. So, you know, we're really not the nutrition police, but that's kind of what we do. You know, really, it's just making sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. You must permit participation by the general public and school community, including parents, students, representatives of the school, food authority, teachers of physical education, school health professionals, school board, school administrators, to work and develop the policy. Our Wellness Policy Committee includes myself, Mayor Richardson, Scott Asti, Jennifer Andrussey, Julie Haynes, Lauren Wilson, Jelaine Case, Kelly Anderson, a parent in our district, and Alyssa Willis, who is a student at Twinsburg High School. Additional, and that is our core committee that just worked on the wellness policy evaluation. We try to keep it a little bit smaller. Additional members of the Wellness Committee, and those are all the folks that help us put on all of our events, the Tiger Spirit Run, the Wellness Workshop that we normally do this year in September, where we're going to be doing a Tiger Wellness Tailgate Party. So that's going to be a thing that we're going to do every year, and it's going to be kind of like a street fair that'll lead up to our first, one of our first home football games. So we're looking forward to that. But the other folks that work on that committee to help that all those things happen are Brian Veltbich, Dominique Sanders, Gus Kritzlow, Al Hadakovic, and Dominique Shewie. So we're going to skip two now. So, as Mrs. Powers stated, the requirements of the review of the policy, initially, when it came out, they were talking about it being an annual review. The final rule, which came out this past year for this school year, was that each LEA is to assess the compliance with its local school wellness policy. And at least once every three years, they remove the reporting annually. But one of the parts of that now is that we also have to make it public. So I think you guys have the full, you've seen the full evaluation with the comments. So basically, we have to be able to report that and then also report our progress on those to the public. So in all, the Wellness Committee sat down and worked through 31 different components in three different areas, nutrition education, physical activity and education, and other school-based activities. So there's a lot in there. And it actually took a little bit, you know, it was a lot more encompassing than we thought. So what I want to do, what Mayor and I are going to do tonight is kind of review some of the positives and some of the not-so-positives. You know, I think with any policy, especially a new policy, you're going to find things that need improvement. I mean, I think that's how things work. If everything was perfect, we wouldn't need to be here, right? So, you know, going through it and looking through and going through each category, probably 85% of the areas that we evaluated, we were mostly implemented or no improvement needed. So that was really good. The ones I'm going to highlight tonight, physical activity. So Mayor will talk a little bit about physical education, but the physical activity part, which is all the things that our PE teachers do with the students. So the non-competitive activities, all those things, the sports activities, just the variety of different activities that we offer at every level, we did very well. So our teachers do a great job of getting the kids active and getting them moving. So that was a very big positive for us. Nutrition promotion, so that's kind of my area as the Director of Food Service. You know, making sure that we offer a variety of produce, making sure that we offer all the subcategories of vegetables, dark greens, reds, oranges, you know, those kind of things, you know. Eat a rainbow, and that's kind of what we promote when we do veggie patrol at the younger grades. We kind of promote that. So we really work on pushing that and making sure that there's a variety of offerings there for them. Whole grain products, you know, probably 90% or more of our products are whole grain. So we've actually been that way for a number of years even before it was required. So the third area that we did really well in, the standards and nutritional guidelines for all food and beverages sold to students on campus were consistent with federal regulations for school meal standards and smart snack in schools. So we did that quite well as well. And then finally, the standards for all food and beverages provided, but not sold to students. Those are the parties and such. So we were at least mostly implemented in most of those areas or no improvement needed. And I say, you know, it's hard to give something no improvement, we always need improvement. So anytime we clicked on a category and item and we said that there was mostly implemented, we felt that that was a good point. So the part that I'm going to have Mayor talk about the bad stuff, no, I'm just kidding. No, but really, the only area that we felt that we really needed to work on, there was two areas. The nutrition and health education, do you want to talk about it? Or, I'll talk about this one, then you could do the next one. So this one, we felt was, was, it was kind of borderline. It was either most, in all the areas that we evaluated, in nutrition and health education, we were either mostly implemented or a little bit borderline in need of improvement or maybe in need of improvement. So nutrition and health education standards and benchmarks that promote benefit of a balanced diet that includes fruits, vegetables, and whole grain, low-fat, fat-free dairy products. So our comment on this area was, we needed to work, and this is the tough part, because at the lower levels, we don't have any health education. So everything's kind of integrated, you know. So the science teachers will do a little part on nutrition or on health. So that was one of the areas that we're going to recommend as well. But we felt that as a Wellness Committee, that we needed to find and implement an age-based health and nutrition curriculum across all grades. I think it's something that we can use, and, you know, I know we're all coming from the health and fitness area, but, you know, we put a lot of value on personal and physical health. And I think we all should, because once we leave the doors of school, we have a whole lifetime ahead of us. And the healthier we are, the more fruitful we'll be and the more successful we'll find. So number seven, that was under nutrition, health education, was the standards. We felt the need for an age-based health and nutrition curriculum across the grades. Number eight was, staff responsible for providing instruction in nutrition education shall regularly participate in professional development activities designed to better enable them to teach the benchmarks and standards. So again, that's something that we all felt that we need to have, some, what's the word I'm looking for? Some in-service for it. You know, there is, it's kind of tough, you know, you can go through and teach it, but it's nice to be able to apply it to life and age-related to that kid, you know, be able to teach it right at the right, appropriately, at the right level, sorry. And one of the things that we found out mostly when we looked at this was, there was a need mostly at RBC, but we also felt that the integration throughout the entire K-12 was recommended. So there's, that was, in that area, we weren't really in need of improvement, but we were borderline. And we just felt that that was an area that we can look at as a district to focus on in the future. Mayor's going to get up and talk about physical education. That's her thing that she does. So I'm going to give that over to her.
Hi. So we're a little hurting in our age-appropriate physical education, going from junior high to the high school. We should have a sequential comprehensive physical education program that's provided to students K-12 in accordance with the physical education content standards and benchmarks adopted by the state. Years ago, before these standards were official, we moved our ninth grade or our high school requirement that our kids mostly got at the ninth grade level, we moved that down to RBC. So what happened over time was that our students coming over to the high school to take physical education had already received their high school requirement. And their idea is, I already have it, I don't need anymore. Class sizes started dropping, and what I began to see is when we would give our SLO at the beginning of the school year, the kids had no clue. They were coming with a high school requirement, but they didn't have the knowledge and they couldn't apply it to themselves to create a healthier lifestyle for themselves. And like you said, you get one body. You get one set of skin, you get one body, and if you don't create, you know, treat it like a temple, doesn't matter how smart you are, if you can't come to work because you're sick, or if you can't, you know, or if you're causing, you know, higher expenses with your employer, because, yeah, absenteeism, sickness, you know, it all comes down, and that's what you see with the big picture. But to tell an eighth grader this means nothing. We all know this. So we, you know, the sequential and the age-appropriate, that's where we're in need of improvement. And hopefully, we can make some changes here. Planned instruction in physical education shall be sufficient for students to achieve a proficient level with regards to standards and benchmarks. So like I said, we got this, we made this change, and then we got the benchmarks, and we tried to meet those benchmarks at the eighth grade level, but it just, it's too much. Physical education classes shall provide students with opportunities to learn, practice, and be assessed on developmentally appropriate knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to engage in lifelong health-enhancing physical activity. So if the goal was just K through eight, then we would be meeting or exceeding the requirements. However, since it's K through 12, the committee felt that this area needed to be improved currently. I already explained that part, so I'm not going to talk about that again. You know, we're at the high school, we have, stay at our facilities that are being underutilized. And our stu, we're failing, I feel like we're failing our kids. To say that an eighth grader is mentally ready, it's just not going to happen. Let's go to the next slide, please. Okay. So these are our limitations, limited facility side to accommodate large groups. The classes at the junior high school are very large. They're sharing a gym. When we have multiple facilities at high school, that we could be doing a much better job. We have limited facility options, no aquatics, no rec center. Where these students are, once they leave us, these opportunities will present themselves when they're in college, when they're on military bases, and whether they're, you know, just living in a community as a citizen. We want these kids to feel comfortable to walk through doors of a fitness center throughout their entire life, or to feel comfortable pulling up a nap and, you know, finding something that they could do in their home. Or, you know, there's just multiple opportunities. We feel that the developmental maturity of the students is not there yet. To think lifelong, to think that I'm going to have this body in my twenties, in my thirties, in my forties, in my fifties, and how your life changes with that, and how you can make changes to your fitness plan based on your lifestyle. So just to get that at the junior high school level, our kids are not ready. And ODE standards and benchmarks, standard three, which are our big standards, student demonstrates the knowledge and skills to achieve and maintain a health-enhancing level of physical activity and fitness. Benchmark B states, they can implement principles and practices to develop a fitness and nutritional plan to meet individual needs. At the high school, I teach a personal training class, I teach dance and fitness, I teach team sports and fitness. We incorporate fitness into every class that we offer, because we want our kids to know what to do with it. You know, to say an athlete, just because they're in athletics, that's physical education. It's not. It's athletics. We want these kids, once they leave athletics, once they put that ball down, how are they going to make the changes to their bodies so they can continue a healthy lifestyle? So we recommend that the ninth through 12 curriculum, including the development of the fitness plan, and the fit principle is frequency, intensity, time, and type, how you are going to take knowledge about your body and create a fitness plan for yourself. So that's a big part that we push, but it's also the part that I ask about when they get, first get me in August. Their SLO is about the fit principle. These kids can't create fitness plans for themselves. They have, yeah, in the middle school, and they're coming up to high school, and I'm asking you, what's your fitness plan? No clue. No clue. So this fitness plan is really important, cardiovascular endurance, muscular strength and endurance, flexibility, body composition, and the nutrition that they need, the nutrition knowledge that they need. And, you know, I tell the kids, you may not be able to control your nutrition right now, but at least gain the knowledge so when you leave your home and you have more control over what you do, you know, you have some kind of a base of what to do. One of the cool things about our facility and our community is that our mayor is very fit. When I'm teaching in the fitness center, the mayor's there running. He even taught a spinning class for my, two of my classes, and offered it. Saw me taking a spinning, my student is sent to the fitness center for a spinning class, and he says, hey, why don't I teach a class for you? And I said, well, I wanted to ask you, but I didn't think you had the time. And he taught, and the kids loved it, to be in a class where your mayor is teaching a spinning class. It's just the coolest thing. So there's so many kids who are coming up to the high school from the junior high that don't get to experience these opportunities. And they tell me, yeah, I don't need that. I got it already. And I'll say, well, what, you know, what are the five components of health-related fitness? They don't know. Tell me your fitness plan. They don't know. So I want them to know. I think it's really important. And if we can bring that, so our recommendations are, next slide, returning the quarter credit of, returning one quarter credit. Right now, they come up with a half a credit. So let them still do something at the eighth grade level, but then come up and have to take at least one class at the high school level, so they can get a quarter credit at the junior high and get another quarter credit at the high school. And I guarantee, if I can get them in for one class, I can bring them back again for another class, so they have more time throughout their high school years to, you know, continue to improve their knowledge and improve their health. Change the current eighth grade PE from year-round, every day, to one semester every day. We'd also like to maintain the seventh grade PE in one semester and add health education. Saw me taking a spinning, my student sent to the fitness center for a spinning class, and he says, hey, why don't I teach a class for you? And I said, well, I wanted to ask you, but I didn't think you had the time. And he taught, and the kids loved it, to, to, to be in a class where your mayor is teaching a spinning class, it's just the coolest thing. So there's so many kids who are coming up to the, from, to the high school, from the junior high, that don't get to experience these opportunities. And they tell me, yeah, I don't, I don't need that. I got it already. And I'll say, well, what, what, you know, what are the five components of health-related fitness? They don't know. Tell me your fitness plan. They don't know. So I want them to know. I think it's really important, and if we can bring that, so our recommendations are, next slide, returning the quarter credit of, returning one quarter credit. Right now, they come up with a half a credit. So let them still do something at the eighth grade level, but then come up and have to take at least one class at the high school level. So they can get a quarter credit at the junior high and get another quarter credit at the high school. And I guarantee you, if I can get them in for one class, I can bring them back again for another class. So they have more time throughout their high school years to, you know, continue to improve their knowledge and improve their health. Change the current eighth grade PE from year-round, every day, to one semester every day. We'd also like to maintain the seventh grade PE in one semester, and add health education to the eighth grade, have one semester of health education. And then we'd also like to add formal health education components in grades K through six. And we believe that if we can make something like this work, then that needs improvement category will improve greatly. So looking at the big picture, physical and nutritional health play a huge role in our quality of life. And it allows these kids, I'm telling you, when the kids, you know, when they release some energy throughout the day and they're more physically active, they do so much better in school. When they're eating breakfast, so much better in school. I mean, I cannot tell you how many kids don't eat breakfast. How many kids are coming to school, eating a bag of chips, if they get that? Or they'll have a pop in their hands. And I'll say, did you look at the nutrition label? Do you know how much sugar's in that? And we talk about that. And I said, would you eat that much sugar? Just sit there and eat? No. So moving a quarter PE credit from the middle school back to the high school would enable Twinsburg City School District to better prepare our students for a healthy lifestyle once they leave our doors. Twinsburg High School is blessed to have state-of-the-art facilities and have the ability to show our students a wide variety of physical activities that they can continue with for the rest of their lives, in that one body that they get. I just want to make sure I can tell them. The other cool thing about being at the fitness center and teaching there, I'll teach a class, and right next to it is a class of Silver Sneakers. You know, and I'll tell the kids, do you, can you see yourself doing that? You know, there's, there's men in there, there's women in there, there's veterans in there, there's, you know, grandmas and grandpas. Or there's a boot camp of women running around with their, you know, their strollers, and they're working out in the corner. And my students are looking like, what's that? And they get comfortable, and that is so key to this. If you are comfortable, and you, if you make it a part of your life, it'll be a part of your life forever. If you're eating breakfast now, you're going to continue to eat breakfast later. So we do good stuff, we're just not doing it to enough kids at the high school. My, my numbers have dropped. I used to have classes of thirty-five to forty kids. Last year, my biggest class was sixteen. That was my biggest class. Much better this year, but I went out and recruited. I told the kids, it doesn't matter if you got it at the eighth grade, you still have to take one class with me before you leave. You want to end anything?
Yeah.
Oh, the final recommendations?
Final recommendations.
Okay. So HBE staff members, we'd like to be able to work with the curriculum department to review current health and PE standards and curriculum this summer, make recommendations to the district curriculum and technology committee in the late summer of 2018, and then final recommendations to the Twinsburg Board of Education, late summer.
It was, it was very enlightening to go through this policy step by step, because it's, it's really easy to look at in general and say, oh, we're doing good, we're doing great on all this. But when you look at all these, take thirty-one different areas and how we're doing in all those areas, it was, it was very enlightening. I know for Mrs. Powers sat in with us when we went through the initial evaluation, and it was enlightening for her as well as for everybody else, because everybody's in their own little pocket, you know, like I'm, I'm in my food service pocket, and I do some wellness as well, but, and, and, you know, Mayor's at the high school, you know, Jen Anthony was at Chamberlain, and everybody's at their particular school, they only really see their view. So when we all got together, we actually started looking at all this stuff. We kind of saw more the big picture, and saw how, oh wait, how does this fit into this and to this? And when we looked at the curriculum, and we looked at the, the education component, we really felt, you know, not only was there a need for a health education component throughout K-12, but, but also we were, that, that initial move years ago, when we moved that credit from the high school down to the middle school, we never felt really the, we never, nobody ever really got to sit down and talk about ramifications of that, or what it actually did.
The big picture.
So when we all sat down together, we kind of really were able to dig into that, and really see that, that move, although at the time was probably perfectly fine, I know it was so kids could get that out of the way, so they could get more options at the high school, but, you know, looking at health and fitness and how it affects us for the rest of our lives, we just felt that, wow, it's, we're just missing a big piece. And, you know, you look at the high school, we're connected to the rec center, we got this phenomenal facility, and our kids aren't experiencing it. So we, we really felt as, as educators, as health promoters, that we were doing our kids an injustice, that we could do better. And I mean, we're doing, like I said, I think we're doing well in a lot of things, but we felt that area particularly, we could do better. So that's all we have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you for the thoroughness, and both the passion, which you went through this, and, you know, it's starting, I'm sure, opened other administrators' eyes and ours as well. And it makes perfect sense for, you know, a deeper review.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question. So what does your SLO, you know, consist of when you're testing these kids?
I ask them to write, well, I ask them what the components are, you know, do, do they know the health, fitness components? And then I ask them to write out a fitness plan, using the FIT principle. What is the FIT principle? Write out a plan. They don't know it.
And that's what they should be learning in eighth grade?
Eighth grade.
Okay.
Well, it's what they're supposed to be learning in high school, but they're getting it in eighth grade.
Yeah, they're getting it in eighth grade.
And it's not, it's not meaningful.
And I think the part of it is, you know, the facility's is small there, and they're overwhelmed. When you got forty middle school kids in a room at one time, it's hard to go into that kind of detail with kids.
They want to play. At eighth grade, they want to play.
Yeah. So then what are the benchmarks that the state holds?
We have two benchmarks with each, each standard, and they just go into a little bit more detail, so the, the, for standard three, the benchmark is being able to write a fitness plan, using the FIT principle.
And that was probably the biggest standard that, that we were missing at the eighth grade, you know, at that eighth grade level. The, the first couple standards were.
Specialize, being able, specialized skills.
Activities and games or activities, it's mostly fitness.
Biomechan, even biomechanical, they want you to be able to either see yourself doing something, or view someone else doing something, and, and be able to say, oh, okay, you need to bend your knees a little bit more, you need to get to the ball, you know, like the biomechanical principles of different activities.
I know when you sat.
Hard to do, with forty kids in class, in a small environment.
When we sat in the wellness committee, and one of our, we have a student on this level, and we, we kind of talked about, like, some of the things that they're supposed to do at the high school level that they're being asked to do at the eighth grade level, they're not comfortable with yet. You know, they're not, they're not comfortable in their own skin to do stuff in front of a group of people. You know, what were the, do a squat, do a proper squat.
Public display of physical activity.
You know, where, you know, Alyssa now, as a tenth grader, she said, yeah, I wouldn't have any issue doing it now, but back then, it was, would have been embarrassing, you know?
They're awkward at that age.
Awkward, yes, for sure.
Unless you're introduced to it, some of these kids are not, yeah.
And we have, we have, you know, four electives at the high school that they could choose from. So you don't have, if you're not an athlete, there's something for you.
Right.
And it's terrifying. Say you're a dancer, and you get put in a physi class, and now you have to play football. It's terrifying. Or if you're, even if you were a football player and you had to go dance, you know, it would be terrifying either way. So at least we, we offer kids choice, so they can feel comfortable doing what they're doing, and want to continue to do it after high school.
And each one of those choices has a fitness and a health component to it. So it's, they're getting it, so if a kid were coming up to high school and there's options, they want to take, like, an overview of everything, they could do something like that, if they wanted to do dance specific, they're still going to get fitness and health in there as well. They wanted to do personal training or weight training, then, you know, it's, it enables them to take something that they're more comfortable with. And when you get kids in a, in an area where they're more comfortable with, they're more, you know, it's just like, you know, when you get kids that are in AP chemistry, you're going to get kids that are more excited about chemistry than general chemistry, that they have to take, you know, so it's not the same way. So if you give them options, which we can give them up at the high school, I think you'll get kids that are more interested in, will, you know.
And want to value it.
Thank you.
And that's actually one of the, the standards, is being able to say that you can understand the social components of a physical activity, that you value the cultural, even the, even cultural parts of physical activity. In our community, where there's so many different cultures, it's, it has different meaning. So if you can get them, you know, where, and you can offer a variety to them, it's just, the chances of them continuing physical activity for the rest of their lives is going to increase.
And they'll do better in school.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely appreciate, you know, the time and effort to, you know, takes, takes a lot to sometimes look at inside yourself and, and find, find what you're not doing to the best of your ability. So I appreciate that, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Well, as you can see, this is a, a topic that there's a lot of passion around, and I was fortunate to sit in on the meeting at which the rubric was being evaluated. And the one thing that we recognize is, you know, we, we do a lot of things well, we do a lot of things okay, and we do a lot of things, like was pointed out this evening, that we need to do better, and that's the purpose of an evaluation. Now, the standard here is that, once the committee has evaluated the wellness program presented to the Board of Education, the policy actually says that this will be posted on the website. And so now that the evaluation has been presented to the board, we will be posting this on the website for the public. The one thing that we will be doing, and Mrs. Farthing has already been meeting with me and with a number of the PE folks, is to start to take a look at the continuum of services we provide kids as it pertains to health and physical education. We can't make a switch to how we present PE in the master schedule quickly, and I'll give you an example. Parents sometimes prefer that the student is taking PE in the eighth grade, because that opens up more course offerings at the high school. So Mrs. Farthing and I talked about this, this is going to be something that we have to take, get, look at strategically, to make sure that we're filling everybody's needs, understanding that as a school district, the evaluation here points to some things that we are not strong in. And so how do we strengthen those areas without causing a problem in another part of the schedule for kids who want to accelerate learning at the middle school, so as to be able to take other opportunities at Twinsburg High School? So it's going to be a balancing act. But the one thing that I do appreciate in, in all the work that they did, is the fact that we've identified a weakness in our health education. We don't have formal health education, except at the ninth grade level with Mr. Kritchlow. And in a world where there's so much stress and anxiety on our students, in a world where there's so many choices for what they eat, we have to do a better job of schooling our students and understanding how to make the best choices, so that they're healthy individuals as children and onto adult ones. So this is going to be a conversation that Mrs. Farthing's going to take the lead on from here forward, pulling together HPE folks and other classroom educators, administrators, and will bring forth to the district curriculum and technology committee in late summer the recommendations, and then push that into a board meeting in the latter part of the summer. So we're only starting, I do appreciate the passion, and it was interesting to sit in with the teachers. They, they really understand the continuum of services and where we need to do some improvement, and also what we're doing really well. So thank you for that, too.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Looks like you have one more administrative report to say.
We do.
All right.
And we do have a PowerPoint to accompany this. Board of Education, annually, as you know, at this board meeting, we present to you the academic fees and pay-to-participate fees for the coming school year, 2018 and 19. And so we're going to do that this evening, I'm going to try to do this in brevity, I know the meeting's going quite long, so we are going to proceed here. So first of all, Board of Education, I'm really delighted to present to you the academic fees for next year, because as you will note, there will be some decreases in the academic fees at some grade levels. The finance subcommittee met last Friday and took a look at very large spreadsheets that had a lot of information and data, and I do want to commend Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Trapphegan, Mr. Welker, Mr. Aho, for the work that they do behind the scenes to make sure that we negotiate great prices for consumable materials, that they go back with the vendors to see the assurance that we're getting the very best prices. And because of that diligence in their work, we're pleased to let you know that we were able to reduce the grade K three fee from eighty dollars to seventy-five, grade four through eight from ninety dollars to eighty-five. Our ninth graders' fee this year was fifty-five dollars, it will be reduced to fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. And grades ten through twelve, this year it was fifty dollars, and it will be forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for next year. Just a special note about the preschool at the top, you know, we currently run the integrated preschool program where the tuition is an aside, but this is the fee for the kids' snacks, daily snacks. And that fee for the IPP, or the integrated program, will remain the same. Our kindergarten preparatory program, which is the new preschool, the KPP program, will have a snack fee of eighty dollars, that's because that particular program is going to be running five days a week instead of the four that the IPP runs. So that would be the difference between those two rates for the preschool. As always, our academic fees are waived for children who receive free breakfast and lunch through the federal lunch program, and the academic fee is reduced by one-half for children receiving reduced-priced breakfast and lunch as part of the federal lunch program. And parents who wish to participate in the reduced fee, or the fee waiver, must have a waiver form on file with Mr. Bendis over at Food Services. He does a great job of managing all that paperwork, and that really is the, the benchmark as to whether or not a person would qualify for reduced price or, or free academic fees. Pay-to-participate fees, as always, Board of Education, we have very large spreadsheets that have now documented over time the costs associated with running our, our very many supplementals here for the kids. And the cost associated with pay-to-participate is actually just twenty-five percent of the total cost to run any of those sports or after-school activities. And the costs include things such as transportation, personnel, entry fees, equipment costs, and facility rentals. In all the cases where you will see the fees having gone up on the spreadsheet, it would be because the personnel costs have risen over time. And that's just the cost of doing business, the staff members have a negotiated agreement, and then there are the increases in the supplemental contract compensation rates as well. And so those are the, some of the things that will tinker with the, the cost of each of the pay-to-participate fees. Continuing into the 2018, 19 school year, will be the students who are participating in our federal lunch program will also be able to receive a reduction in our pay-to-participate fees. So students who receive free lunches and want to participate in any of our extracurricular activities would be paying half the cost associated with that particular activity. And students who received reduced-priced breakfast and lunch would pay a quarter of the cost, I mean, it's reduced by a quarter of the cost for those students who are on reduced-priced lunches or breakfasts. And once again, it's really important that the parents have those signed waiver fees on file with Mr. Bendis's office, is through that accounting that we're able to determine whether a child would be paying the full price for an activity, half price, or having their activity fee reduced by a quarter. And so here are some examples. So if I am a student who is participating on the swim team, the fee for next school year is a hundred and ten dollars, that didn't increase this year, the reduced price would be fifty-five dollars for that particular student, because they are qualifying for a free lunch or breakfast. Then if I'm a student who is cheering on the football team, cheerleading squad, and that rate is sixty dollars, and they receive reduced-priced breakfast or lunch, their fee is reduced by one quarter, so that they're actually paying forty-five dollars. Now with regard to our fall sports and activities, parents who are currently participating through our free and reduced lunch program and have their waivers on file with Mr. Bendis for the fall sports and activities, if you have those waivers on file, then you've done all that you need then to be reduced in your price of your activity for your student. For our winter sports and activities, parents will have to have filed and be qualified for the 2018-19 federal lunch program in order to receive the reductions in the pay-to-participate Once again, this year, parents are encouraged to pay their fees online by going to the Easy Pay portal on our district website. And a contact person, if you have questions about the fee schedule for next year, would be our athletic director coordinator of K-12 student activities, Mr. Fantone, and on the screen are his email and his office phone number. Also this evening, Board of Education, just quickly, I want to show what your... Also this evening, Board of Education, just quickly, I want to show what you're being recommended this evening in regard to our breakfast and lunch program prices for next year. As you can see by the screen there, we are making the recommendation that the current prices for our lunch program and for our breakfast program will remain the same for next school year. So our kindergarten children will pay two dollars and seventy-five cents for their lunch and that's all the way up to grade three. Students in grades four through six will have the lunch price of three dollars. In grades seven and eight, the lunch price is three dollars. Grades nine through twelve, the lunch price is three dollars. And then all grades from kindergarten through twelve, the breakfast price will remain at one dollar and fifty cents. So that would be our presentation this evening regarding our fees that are being recommended this evening on the agenda. Are there any questions?
I'm going to play the role of historian, just to put a couple of things in the context. Before myself and any of the colleagues up here, previous board made some pretty substantial changes financially for the district in what was called the Operational Change Plan. And there are three legs to that stool, which included unfortunately, you know, budget cuts and staff reductions, a levy, and the fees that we just went over. On the pay to participate fees, when we compare to other districts, they do it very differently. Some districts, they're paying, the students are paying, the parents are paying a hundred percent of the actual cost. You don't have to look very far for our neighbors to see that. But if you saw the spreadsheets that Mr. Welker puts together, not only by sport, but also for your averages, and one thing I didn't hear Mrs. Powers say, but I know that keeps going up, is the cost of officials, which we can't control. And to only pay twenty-five percent of a sport when sometimes, you know, there's private clubs and such, and fees can be up in the thousands, I think it's still quite a bang for the buck. We still have below the state average cost per pupil. So just putting into that historical context, obviously the Finance Committee looks at this, you know, in very much detail. But, you know, there are things that we don't want to erode in the financial stability and we, while we think, you know, for the continual renewal of levies, all these things come into play with respect to academic fees. And yes, it's good to reduce fees where we can and there's a lot of good work that went on. But just to give that historical perspective, this isn't something that just comes up, you know, once in a while. These come up annually. This is the time of year it comes up. We don't choose this time. This is actually a particular time where these fees have to be established. And there's a lot of history behind this. And just like policy, you know, you look at, you know, why were these decisions made? And that's what, you know, this board looks at because none of us were here when these were first established. And there's very good reasons for a lot of the financial decisions that were made and have kept this district strong. So that's the end of my history lesson.
And I'll just add, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Felber providing some context for what was just presented today. I just want to acknowledge the Finance Committee and really a lot of the work that goes into coming up with these recommendations. I'm not a member of the Finance Committee, but I hear that a lot of hours go into this in terms of just discussing, you know, and drilling down, a lot of review of data to make sure that, you know, everything is accurate. We also do research, as Mr. Felber alluded to, of what's going on in neighboring districts and other districts because we want to make sure that we're in alignment, excuse me, with what's going on. But we also want to make sure that we are being cognizant and sensitive to the needs of our families and to any hardships that are out there. And lastly, this process, I think, as are many of the things that we do, is very fluid. So, you know, as circumstances change, and again, even with Mr. Welker, as if we're able to leverage better deals that diminishes or reduces costs, we like to pass that on to the parent, to the consumer. So that's going to continue. And I just want to make sure that the public understands that we take this very seriously and that we're always going to be very diligent in making sure that we're having the critical conversations and discussions around other possible ways, if there are any, that we can, you know, help defray the costs that, you know, that gets passed on to our families.
Just wanted to say thank you. The way these are figured is very intriguing and unique. It would be very easy for the district to throw a dart up on the wall and pick a number and enact that number to be paid for sports or academic fees. This board and previous boards places a lot of onus and work on the administration to come up with these fees. So I appreciate, you know, the fact of the amount of data. And while Mr. Curtis alluded to the work that goes into reviewing that data, there's ten times more hours putting that data together. So I appreciate the effort that's continued to be done for that. And also just wanted to, you know, make a mention of, you know, you touched on it briefly, Superintendent Powers, in regards to the lowering of the academic fees. Again, these fees are reviewed every single year and, you know, by the diligence of, you know, Mrs. Farthing and Mr. Welker and their ability to keep the quality of the programming and things that we're delivering at the same level, but negotiate some lower prices through some creative programming and things like that. That allows us to be able to reduce those fees. Strictly, you know, that is strictly through the efforts of, you know, your administrative team. So we appreciate that and we're happy to be able to pass that on, you know, this evening. Any other comments? Anything else, Mrs. Powers?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on. Mr. Aho, I don't see any blue cards.
No.
So pass by remonstrance. Onto Item K, Treasurer's Report Recommendations. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items K-1 and 2. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes: regular meeting of May 2, 2018, as sent to the Board under separate cover. And Item K-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the May update of the Twinsburg City School District Fiscal Year 2018 Five-Year Forecast as sent to the Board under separate cover. Do I have a motion to approve Items K-1 and 2?
Sound vote.
Mr. Felber first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Any discussion on Items K-1 and 2?
Maybe just, you know, Marty, on the five-year forecast, just, you know, the requirements of how you do that and when and how that happens every year, twice a year.
Sure. This is the update, the May update. We do the main forecast as in October. This one basically just updates the information for the current fiscal year. The one in October, actually, you get, you know, you click it ahead, you know, one year. This one just stays in the same timeframe. We just updated with the information that we currently have at hand. And one of the things that we were able to do on this one was because we did pass the renewal levy, before you pass the, when you have a levy that's up for renewal, you have to take and put it down at the bottom of their spreadsheet and you show that as being a potential, you know, something that you need to keep an eye on. So actually, since this passed, we were able to put it back up to the top. It actually then is reflected in the real estate line. So it kind of gives a little, you know, better visual picture of the revenues. Some people forget to look to the bottom of the spreadsheet and they always miss that, you know, the real estate tax that gets put down at the bottom of there when there's a levy. And then they'll ask like, why is that number off by, you know, four million dollars or, you know, the four point nine million dollars? And that's why. So that one now, you know, on the update, it's up to the top. It's on the real estate line, so you'll be able to see it there. I will, you know, I'll send it to the ODE. They'll post it within a couple of days. The requirement is to have it in by the end of the month, end of May. And then they post it. You know, all the school districts will have theirs out by then. So then do it again in October, so that's kind of the cycle.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Aho, please call roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Items K-1 and 2, pass five zero. Without objection from my colleagues, I'll read Items L-1 through 3. L-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certified licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. L-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And Item L-3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion on Items L-1 through 3.
Sound.
Mrs. Davis first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second.
I guess so.
Any discussion?
Once again, congratulations, depending on the outcome of this vote, those that are up for a contract renewal and also the continuing contracts.
Mr. Powers?
Mr. Solara, as Mr. Felber just noted, there's great importance to the personnel spreadsheets this evening. Tonight, we bring forth for your approval a recommendation for not only the continuing contracts, the teachers that you met this evening, but also our three-year limited, two-year limited, and one-year limited teacher contracts. And for teachers to get to this point in their career, you know, they've worked hard all year. They have had very successful evaluations and the principals have all written personal letters of recommendation for every single person on the spreadsheet this evening. So I bring them to you with the satisfaction and the confidence that these educators are really top-notch kinds of people that we're just so pleased to employ here in our school district. The other thing I wanted to just note is this evening, you will also notice that there are a number of administrative contract renewals. Mr. Solara, you mentioned earlier this evening, looking behind the curtain and seeing all the work that has to be done. And we celebrate our teachers and the impact that they make on our kids every single day. But supporting them behind the scene is a very strong group of administrators who I am honored to call my colleagues. And so I just want to call their names out this evening. Our administrative contracts for our certified staff, Mr. Mike Silverthorne, Assistant Principal at the High School, Mr. Tim Sullen, Assistant Principal at the High School, and Mrs. Denise Trapphegan, our Director of People's Services, who has responsibility for all of our special programs for all of our students and does just such a great job. So Mike and Tim and Denise, thank you for your dedication and making sure that our kids are very well-supported every single day in the jobs that you do here. Also, Board of Education, we have classified administrative contracts that are being recommended to you this evening. Mr. Bendis, who does just a fantastic job in all things food service and wellness, and we're delighted that he is here and he does so many fantastic initiatives with our kids. The students know Mr. Bendis. He makes sure that he's out and about in the buildings and that's a mark of who he is and what he's all about. So I appreciate Mark and all that he does. John Fry Martino, our Assistant Treasurer, supports Marty in his efforts, making sure that, you know, we are good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars here. And just the last meeting, we celebrated the Auditor of State with Distinction Award. That's because John supports what happens down on that end of the building, making sure that we're accountable to all that we do. John has a particular responsibility in the field of workers' comp and workers' comp claims and how we manage that. And his diligence in that respect is just fantastic. So John, I thank you for all that you do in our district, too. Matt McGing, who is the power behind the internet here and makes sure that we're up and running and goodness, when we're not, boy, he knows about it. And he is just a delight to work with, makes sure that our Chromebook Initiative has gone off without a hitch, is just a smart individual who has an eye on innovation that keeps us running here on the infrastructure side of things. And then to end the list here is Dean Taylor. Probably don't even know who Dean is. Dean is the silent guy behind the scenes that makes sure we're warm, safe, and dry, makes sure that the lights are working, the heat's on, the air's on, and supports all of our head custodians in their work and our grounds crew, too. So I just wanted to say a special word about our administrators. They are an outstanding team of educators who are passionate about what they do and I'm honored to be their colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
And I just wanted to also echo the appreciation of Mr. Felber as well as Mr. Solara and I'm sure my colleagues share in our appreciation for all that you do. And in touring the buildings, we're able to see it. We see it in action. We see it every day. We see it when our kids come home and are happy and have good stories to tell for those that are willing to tell them. But nonetheless, we know that there's a lot of work that goes on. There's a lot of work in with respect to evaluating all of the staff. And it's just an acknowledgement of what I always like to say we already know. And to have the privilege as a board member to approve these contracts, I'm more than happy to do so. So thank you for all that you do.
Echo that and thank you for every, just the hard work daily and things that we don't even know about how you keep our district functioning and, like I said, just in many ways that we would never even think of or just take for granted. So we appreciate that.
Mr. Aho?
Roll. Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes. Items L-1 through 3, pass five zero. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read Items M-1 through 12. M-1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following Board of Education Governing Board Resolution authorizing 2018-2019 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, whereas the Board of Education Governing Board and its administration desire for the schools with one or more grades at the seventh through twelfth grade level under their jurisdiction to be voluntary members of the OHSAA. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education Governing Board that all schools listed, Twinsburg High School and RB Chamberlain Middle School, do hereby voluntarily renew their membership in the OHSAA and that in doing so, the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, and business rules of the OHSAA are hereby adopted by this board as and for its own minimum student athlete eligibility requirements. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the Board reserves the right to raise student athlete eligibility standards as the Board deems appropriate for the schools and students under its jurisdiction. And be it further resolved that the schools under this Board's jurisdiction agree to conduct their athletic programs in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, business rules, interpretations, and decisions of the OHSAA and to cooperate fully and timely with the Executive Director's Office of the OHSAA in all matters related to the interscholastic athletic programs of the schools. Furthermore, the schools under this Board's jurisdiction shall be primary enforcers of the OHSAA Constitution, bylaws, regulations, business rules, and the interpretations and rulings rendered by the Executive Director's Office. The administrative heads of these schools understand that failure to discharge the duty of primary enforcement may result in fines, removal from tournaments, and suspension from membership and/or other such penalties as prescribed in bylaw eleven. Item M-2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the change to the November 21, 2018, regular meeting as previously approved to November 28, 2018, due to the Thanksgiving break. And 3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following list of books to be deleted from inventory upon the recommendation of the Superintendent. The list is printed in the agenda. M-4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the purchase of computers from CDWG 200, North Milwaukee Avenue, Vernon Hills, Illinois, 60061, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, as sent to the Board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. M-5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School track teams to travel to the Ohio State University in Columbus, Ohio, for the OHSAA Track and Field State Championships on Thursday, May 31, 2018, and returning on June 2, 2018. The cost of the trip will be paid for by the Athletic Department budget with support from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters as sent to the Board under separate cover. M-6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves 2018-2019 student parent handbooks for Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George D. Dodge Intermediate School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School. School, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, Wilcox Primary School, Wilcox Integrated Preschool Program, and kindergarten preparatory program, and the district athletic handbook as sent to the Board under separate cover. M-7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of Media Center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. M-8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Patty Coslo for independent public relations consulting services from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, at an hourly rate of $60 per hour, not to exceed 960 hours, as sent to the Board under separate cover. M-9, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the student-fee guidelines for the 2018-2019 school year. These guidelines include academic fees, course fees, co-curricular fees, and pay-to-participate fees per the attached exhibit. M-10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the breakfast and lunch prices for 2018-19, maintaining the prices at the same level as during the 2017-2018 school year. M-11, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education rescinds the approved release of transportation originally approved on August 2, 2017, for four students for the 2017-2018 school year from the Twinsburg City School District to the Solan City School District. M-12, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an in lieu of transportation payment in the amount of $250 per student for 144 students for the 2017-2018 school year, per the Ohio Department of Education, for the following schools listed on the agenda. The list of students is kept on file in the Transportation Office. Total cost of $250 for 144 students is $35,750. Do I have a motion for Items M-1 through 12?
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Just want to touch base on Item M-4, which is the approval of purchase of computers. This would be for the second purchase of our Chromebooks. For these would be for the rising 9th and 12th graders at the high school, which would put our high school fully one-to-one technology for grades 9 through 12. So this would be the second part of our integration of the Chromebooks, which was started last year, or actually started in January for the 9th and 10th graders, current 9th and 10th Any discussion on any other items? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes. Items M-1 through 12, pass 5-0. Item M-13, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the purchase of computers from Connection 7503 Standish Place, Rockville, Maryland, 20855, in the amount of $52,872, as sent to the Board under separate cover. This is a permanent improvement fund expense. Do I have a motion for Item M-13?
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, discussion? These computers replace a lab, and also some carts, Chromebook carts, and it's part of our, oh, no, that's not.
No, this is the project Lead the Way purchase, to be able to expand introduction to engineering to Twinsburg High School next year, as well as one lab replacement, believe
Any other discussion? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes. Item M-13, passes 5-0. Moving on to miscellaneous.
Just good luck to the Twinsburg High School track team on their upcoming meet at Ohio State University, or the Ohio State University. And I know the season started a little bit rough. We witnessed some of that. They didn't really have meets canceled because of storms or lightning or anything that. They had some meets that were canceled because of snow, so it was a rough start to the season. But the coaches did a really good job making up dates and coordinating so that the kids can get in their meets, and it just was a, just really remarkable, I mean, just outstanding to witness the talent on those teams and the enthusiasm and excitement, and how many kids we have turn out every year for the track team. And like I said, I'm just amazed that every year when I go see them from RBC up into the high school, just the amount of talent that we have. And good luck with their upcoming track meet, state tournament.
Wanted to give a shout-out to both the Prom and After Prom Committees. I heard nothing but fabulous results. After Prom, I heard, was just so much fun, and I know the kids very much appreciated. I was flabbergasted by the prizes and the amount of effort that went into that. And good luck to all the 2018 graduates. I'll try to hold it together, especially the two that aren't financially responsible.
I wanted to give a shout-out to the football fundraiser called Mulch Mania. I actually had the privilege of participating this year. So if you see the yard signs around that, you know, that indicate that mulch was done in specific yards or businesses, that's the work of our kids, that's the work of our coaches. A lot of parents volunteer their time on a weekend to spread mulch and raise a lot of money. So as I'm told, this year, they're completely sold out. It's a lot of hard work, but I think it's for a very, very good cause. I had the opportunity to spend a few hours with Coach Bell. He actually lent a hand as well. I picked up a shovel and, you know, not only just barked out orders, but actually put in some, put in some work to make sure that the job was done well. So I wanted to thank all of the parents and all of those people who volunteered to organize the event. It was very well done, and I'm happy to have been a part of it.
Any other miscellaneous? That will move on to, to Item O, Executive Session. Make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 9:11 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees and the discipline of a student as per Board of Education Policy 0166A, and to discuss what the Board's legal counsel disputes involving the Board that are subject of pending or imminent court action as per Board of Education Policy 0166D. I made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aho?
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Board is now in executive session. Thank you.